So I have six oh one, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded and will be available on the town YouTube channel. The listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Uh, the Zoom meeting ID is eight three three eight nine three three one four nine five. Passcode seven five seven zero five seven. And by phone three zero nine two zero five three three two five. Can I join me in pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic or which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, so the first item is just an update on the FY twenty fourth budget. So tomorrow night is the finance committee review for us if it's seven forty five PM. So I'm just gonna attend. But I don't know if we'll have any questions. Um, I never got asked by the town administrator to defend it. So you probably just thought it was fine. So what happens to the finance committee meetings? Um, the next is discuss election of new officers. This came up last time. But because we just had minimum four people, we decided to postpone it. I don't know if people still want to do that. It's not like it's critical that we do this. It's just we've had a change. It was a year ago that I started as chairman and we said I would do it for one year and then have an election. We've had a change of memberships. So I think it's just appropriate to do it now, but. People wish to wait till the next meeting when there's more people, we can do that. It's up to you.
As far as I'm concerned, you're gonna remain there. So it's.
Cause I think you do a great job.
Do we want to have that?
Definitely.
Be final voting now.
Okay, so we only have.
It doesn't change how I'm gonna.
Um, Tom Burton was our clerk. Um, he's left. So we technically do not have a clerk now. Um, I've been doing the meeting minutes. I'm fine continuing to do that. So the responsibility of the clerk at this point really just be. If I'm not at a meeting, I'm the meeting. So.
Yeah, and that's not gonna be me either.
Does somebody wish to be the clerk?
It, okay, all right. The shaking, yeah, I would be willing to.
Oh, okay.
Beautiful myself as a clerk.
Right, great. Um, so I guess if somebody wants to make a motion for.
I'll make a motion to nominate.
Paul.
Paul and. Or the clerk and Dan Higgins for. It's there to do it separately.
No.
The chairman.
Okay, second. Again, um, all those in favor?
I.
Opposed? All right.
Thank you.
So. Where is that piece of? So one thing is there's a, um, the accountant has a form. If we have any invoices. There's a form of who can sign off of them and in what order. So, um. But I'm just gonna say. The first person who would sign off on a invoice, if we ever had one, would be myself. But if I'm not available, then it would be Paul. And then yourself. Okay.
You're cheating.
I'm actually looking at a small figure here.
I read you. I thought you were copying.
And then I don't know. I guess you remember you can sign off. You know, the Dayton residents. I know, I still think it needs to be on here. I'm just gonna put Raphael next.
Sure.
And then I'll have him fill this out. Um, and then, um. So, oh, if you just wanna sign that. So this is just, if I can't do it, then Paul, Paul can't do it. And you, and if you can't do it, then Raphael, and if you can't do it.
Come to meetings with me.
I always end up looking around my car for anything at the last second.
And if you just wanna skip the space, Raphael, the sign and then. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Um. Discuss on the annual report. So this is due by April third. So we kinda have to do it tonight. Which I sent that in email. I don't know if you've had a chance to see. I know you looked at it.
I did read it as well. Okay.
Beautiful.
Yeah, it was fantastic. It really was. Yeah, no, it was.
So this just goes in the town, um, annual report. Each committee has to finish something about what they were doing and so forth. So this is a draft. Um. Wanna look it over and if it's okay, then.
Yeah, I liked it a lot. It was articulate. It was.
Good, okay.
So I have a, just one comment. I shared it with my colleagues at the chamber, say, hey, this is what we're doing, right? Uh, just so you know, right? And, um, the comment I got back from Chris, which I thought was an interesting comment. Um, is that, um, she was, uh, was wondering if you could add around the business network event. Um, that we included access to small business resources such as score seed. I can send you this in an email if you'd like, you know, but it just says here are the other resources there that were available to the Dayton business.
Okay.
You know, businesses that attended.
So, does somebody wanna make a motion that we accept this with the additional verbiage that he just described? Oh.
Yeah.
I drafted in, so it's.
Absolutely. I'll make a motion to accept that with very small change.
Okay.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
All right. All right. Awesome.
Um, new business interest in town. I don't know if you saw on Facebook. New place called Jesse's Diner.
Yeah, where Nana's used to be, right?
Yeah.
Like, I think she opens this week. Like, tomorrow. Yeah, you know where Nana's place used to be?
Oh, down in, uh.
I don't know exactly when that closed, maybe a year or two years ago, but there's a new place opening up called Jesse's Diner.
Oh, good.
So she's, she's got to sign up even now. And I think she's, on her Facebook page, she said she was trying to open up by tomorrow, I think, so.
Beautiful. Excellent.
Yes. I think we gotta have breakfast.
Absolutely. There's a new travel agency in town. Called C Next.
Really?
N E X T. So it's home based. The owner lives in Dayton. The office is here. He's, he runs it. He does, does have two employees who are in Europe. Um, so they work remotely, but it's a travel agency. So he's in Dayton. He opened up.
Really?
Travel agent. Well, I didn't think there was anymore.
Yeah, interesting.
Um.
It's fantastic.
A new company I don't know too much about called Pagan Graphics.
Jagan Graphics?
Yeah, they, um. Um, as people come in with business certificates now, um. Mr. Chico sending them to me. So that's how I'm getting some of this.
Great.
Um. So I don't have any information about that last company, exactly what they do. I just know that they're opening in town. And again, it's. Uh, home address was the one listed, so it's another home based business.
That's great. I, I don't know. May I ask, um, when people are filling out the certificate? Added that verbiage on there. Do you wanna be on the thing, um, on our website?
Yes.
Are people opting in?
Yeah. So not everybody, like example, Pagan Graphics said no.
Okay.
I don't know. Maybe this, this isn't their market or something. I don't know what they do, but, um, but most are, yes.
Great.
Yeah.
Beautiful. That's great.
Um.
Obviously it is.
So the next one was, we talked about a job fair or some kind of matching of employers and employees, whether it's a fair or virtual or something. And you wanted to go over that, this, this.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I just wanted to give everybody an update on, on this. And Joe, I think you've got one or this, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Um, okay. So, um, yes, the, you know, background was there were some business owners in Dayton that were suggesting or asking the town could potentially sponsor a job fair. Um, last, last meeting, we talked a little bit about it. Um, and then I volunteered to do some, you know, uh, legwork. So here's where we are with the legwork. So I contacted Dayton Rehabith. Bristol Aggie BP. Um, and when I talked to those folks, they said, you know, John, you ought to try to cast a wide net. Um, so that you get as many students as possible to attend this thing. So they suggested that I also include southeastern, uh, regional book tech, which is in Eastern, which has a really great program.
Absolutely.
Um, and Diamond Regional Voc Tech, which is over in Fall River. Um, so I didn't contact them yet because I wanted to get a feel from my colleagues here, whether we should, you know. Reach that wide or not. I mean, if everybody's okay, I would do that. Um.
I, I, if I may, um. Like, if you go in that far, then you're looking at a serious amount of traveling. For anyone. Well, of course, we don't know what businesses are gonna show up.
So that's, that's what, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about that one.
Okay, but my, my, my thing is the further we go, the more traveling these students are gonna have to do and. I, I don't think it matters either way, but that, that's my opinion. Going in as far as New Bedford.
Yeah.
Uh, that, that's probably.
Yeah, this was no, um, I thought Fall River. Diamond is Fall River.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was actually New Bedford. Okay, that's not too bad.
It's right down the highway.
Only looking at ten fifteen minutes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They're right off of twenty four.
Okay, that, that's the only, the only drawback that I see if, if it was a long traveling.
Got it. Yeah, yeah, I, I agree. I agree. Yeah. Um, so when I spoke with the schools, they all basically said they supported the idea and that they would promote the idea within their school. So that was a good thing, right? BP, by the way, said, hey, we're having, we already have a job fair lined up on May twelve. Um, and we would love to have some Dayton businesses represented there. So, um, so the employers would need to sign up by the end of April. Um, if they wanna participate in the job fair at BP. Um, but that's something that again, let's, let's, we can talk a little bit about.
A hundred percent free.
Oh, okay, okay, great.
So, uh, eight one.
Okay, good, good, good. No charge, okay.
And no later than the end of April for the signup?
Yes. Yeah. Um, and then, um, so then, uh, most suggested, okay, so here's what I learned so far, right? Um, is that. Try to get as many schools and students as possible. Um, they're all interested. The Chamber of Commerce said that they would help promote the event with social media posts and that sort of thing. So that's fine. Um. Then the challenges started to, you know, mount up the hurdles. Let's call it that. Like, everybody said, well, if you're gonna do it, it's gonna happen May, right? It's gonna happen soon, right?
Graduation.
Kids are out of here, right? Um, and then, so then they said, well, you know, logistic wise, between now and May is gonna be a little bit challenging, right? So, you know, the, I started to realize that there are gonna be some hurdles of doing this, right? Um, and one of the things that they did say is that if you're gonna do it, make sure it's a good thing, right? Maybe you make sure it's a good first impression, um, because if you flub it up. This, you know what I mean, is won't be good, right?
We do well, they'll remember. If we do poorly, they'll remember.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, yeah, yep, yep. So, so then let's get to the question. So for me is how do we gauge the employer interest, right? So we've had two employers come to us about potential job fairs, right? You sent me two, two people, the sash person and the other person. Who did recruiting, right? Um, of, um, people that were incarcerated, previously incarcerated.
Oh, yeah, there's, uh, nothing over. There's a home business in town that does a lot of things for prisoners.
Yeah.
And, and newly state published magazines. They have a catalog.
Interesting. Yes, yes.
Oh, I didn't know.
I reached out to both of those people. So the sash person, who was the one that, you know, got this whole thing going. Um, said he would get back to me. He said, okay, great. I'm glad that you're thinking about doing that. Thanks. You know, I'll get back to you with some of the ideas that we have. He has not done that, but I will follow up with him. The other person that had the prisoner thing never got back. I texted her and left her a voice message and so didn't hear back. So I didn't.
By the way, it's, oh, it's placement two, we believe, for newly released. So it's not just people currently incarcerated, because.
Oh, no, that's what I'm. Yeah, yeah. I mean, they were formerly incarcerated, right? Yeah, 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 yep, yep. Um, so, um, so I didn't get a good warm and fuzzy feeling, uh, you know, about this. And, um. So one of the things I guess I would ask is how many employers do you think we need to make this a success? And how are we gonna get them, right? I think it's gonna be a challenge. I do.
And then the other, I can just. Are we adding additional benefit by doing this versus helping something like BP really promote and tell this Titan businesses like. BP's got this, you know, they're organized. You probably wanna, if you're looking for help, you know, it's a good place for you to go.
Right.
Are we running our own? Adding value as opposed to just like pointing those people who need help to something like BP's existing one?
Exactly. I mean, that's, so the question I had was what is the best way that we can connect employers and potential employees, right? And if that is us promoting the fact that these vocational programs exist and that there are job fairs that they have. Maybe that's what we do. You know what I mean? Um, I don't know.
I think because of the fact that the. Time, timing is not there enough on our side.
Yeah.
I think if we. Were at the Bristol Plymouth.
Yeah.
And doing that.
Yeah.
And then maybe for next year. We can try to get Bristol Aggie.
Yeah.
Things like that to help us out.
Yeah.
But we start a little earlier.
Exactly.
January or something like that.
I agree. I agree. I think maybe we try to slate it for next year and then see. Um, this also gives us more time. To steal out the businesses in Dayton to say, would you be interested, right? Because we've been challenged with getting our.
People to.
People.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think that's only air.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not what we wanna say, but.
Exactly. That's the reality of it, right? Yeah, okay, good, beautiful. So, so then my question is if the schools have their own job fair, can Dayton promote it on their town website? And if we can do that, beautiful. Or how do we do that? How do we, you know, how do we help these schools out and, you know? I don't know. Get the awareness within the town that that is, that these events are happening.
Do we know if the high school is also doing anything or are we not? We don't know yet.
I, I don't know. I don't know. I didn't, I didn't have a good conversation. We played phone tag with the gentleman from the high school, but I can reach out to him if you'd like. Yeah.
I, 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 I would love to know whether they do anything or the high school, if they do anything.
Yeah, okay.
They do have seniors coming out.
Yes.
And it's, in my opinion, they're. Their right to actually. Help them.
Yeah.
Find a job and things like that.
Yeah.
I mean. Not their right, their. I, I, I would like to see them helping the students, uh, get a job.
And, and for the businesses in town, if they're looking for people that have trade, trade, you know, experience, it would be a win-win, right? It would be a great win-win. So, um, how, how do we do that? You know? And we do it through the website? Can we?
I mean, it's the towns. I mean, town is part of DP. It's part of Aggie. It's obviously part of the local high schools. There's no reason, I don't, I don't see why the town can't promote. The school system, it's part of.
Yeah, I feel like probably just an email request to Leanne Curwen away, to be honest. I know she maintains the website for the most part.
Okay.
And, uh. I, I obviously can't speak for anybody, but I, I can't see why she wouldn't be happy to do that. She's been very accommodating and everything.
Okay, beautiful, beautiful. Do you want me to take that on?
If you want, sure.
Sure.
I can give Leanne's email if you don't.
Beautiful, sure, yeah.
And it would be nice if, I mean, I don't know how much space they can give us. They do like news blasts, which are like maybe two, three paragraphs, most generally, but.
Okay.
Um, for the employers to know, like, when we say BP does, has electrical programs required. This is really what the kids are learning. It's like, it's a lot of stuff. These are the skills they have. So you can see what it fits with you. That might mean us including links out to the schools or.
Exactly.
Collecting that information at some place and making it available online for people to go look at or.
So I have the links to the programs. Um, and in the back here, you'll see that I, you know, I, um, I did all the legwork on what all of these programs are. And they are really pretty amazing. So I can give links to the programs for each of the schools. And we've got the contact information, you know, for each one of them. So we could then maybe put that in, um, the posting for the town as well, right?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Okay, so I will do that.
And, I mean, you can see, see me on that email to Leanne, just in case she writes back, who are you or something.
Sure, okay, sure. And actually, what I'll say at the meeting, at the DDIC meeting, we agreed that I would follow up and.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, cool.
All the schools or this is just Bristol Plymouth?
No, so each page, right? Um, you'll see BR program. And then here's all the programs that DR has. And then Bristol Aggie program, here's the contact and.
I just jumped on. You said the last page.
Oh, okay, okay.
Jumped on to the last.
Okay, yeah, sorry. Yeah, so each one of these programs, I, I found out what they consist of. Who are the, who's the person that runs it, um, and their contact information. Yeah.
So I mean, I can see the value, including all of them, including Southeastern Regional and D-Mon Regional. Because we're trying to keep this more local.
Yeah.
Do we wish to include them as, as along with BP and the high school and Aggie? Question, just asking.
The other question I would have is say like Bristol Aggie, uh. Do they have students from different cities and different towns?
They do.
So must other schools have the same thing?
Yes.
So that kinda changes my train of thought, that what I started saying.
Yeah.
That. It'll include students from all communities.
Absolutely.
So, uh, yeah, I think we should reach out to all of them.
I mean, there might be Dayton students that go to Diamond.
Exactly, exactly.
Right, because they couldn't get the program at BP. Say they wanted to be an HVAC person.
Yes.
They apply to BP, the program's full, they go to Diamond. You know what I mean? So.
Okay.
Diamond, and I haven't, I, well, it's not there any longer. The HVAC guy. Uh, is a very good friend of mine. In fact, he's been my HVAC guy for a long time. Was the youngest HVAC licensed person in Massachusetts.
Wow.
He's almost fifty mile, but his son is actually one of my descendants here at, uh.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. It's, uh, it's pretty amazing, you know.
They do great stuff.
They do.
I, my eyes have been like, um, wide open about the programs, the availability of these programs and what they do. It's, it's great.
I, I love these, these things because, you know, people say you gotta go to college, you gotta go to college. But not because I'm not a college person. I, uh. I still feel that trades is gotta come in.
Oh, it's the play.
It's critical. In a big way, because if it doesn't, uh, we're gonna have, we're gonna have problems going forward.
Yeah.
I mean, right now, you can't find a carpenter anywhere.
Nope.
You can't find a, a young person. I have a friend of mine that's in electrician. He's, I can't find anybody. To, to work, you know, and it's, it's painful when you have a lot of work and you can't.
Yeah, hey, well, it's limiting to the business growth.
Absolutely.
Right? So, um, so good. Okay, so then I've got my, I've got my next steps. I will. Reach out to each one of these, uh, folks again. Tell them that we're probably not gonna do our own, but we're happily support theirs. I will reach out to Leanne and get her the information and, um, we'll see how it goes from there. But I think that's a great idea. Um, thank you, everybody, for your, um, interest and support.
Who did you talk to over at Bristol Plymouth?
Um, this guy was great, actually. Greg?
John, uh.
Greg, uh, where's I got? Schuman. Nice guy.
Yeah, I, I actually talked to him, um, a couple of times. He called me back to see we had made any progress, what we were gonna do and stuff.
Oh, that's interesting, because he said he would call me in a couple of weeks.
Maybe he had the wrong person. I told him that you actually knew the principal there and, uh. He goes, well, that's okay. Either one, he's just gonna turn them over to me. So it doesn't really matter.
So I did talk to Greg, great guy. Yeah, and he was the one that said, you know, you should really cast a wide net and that sort of thing. And so, yeah, yeah.
I also, the, uh, carpentry shop is the, the teacher there is a very good friend of mine as well, so.
Great.
And he's, he just started this year. He was a crane operator. And he did side jobs as, as car, you know, carpenter. And then he got that job there. And I called him one day and it was cold. He goes, yo, I'm in here. It's so warm.
Yeah, he's gonna get a 401K.
Proceeding at all, you know, but, uh, it's a good to see them.
Awesome.
He's advancing, you know.
Great. Well, thank you.
Um. So it's not on the agenda, because I wasn't quite sure how much time we had, but we're making good progress here. Um, the last meeting, we talked about maybe having somebody from the assessor's office. Um, to future meeting, and not only for our benefit, but kinda do it like an information session. Obviously, it'll be recorded, so people can watch it if they don't show up. Particularly, you know, the businesses in town, like what are the things they're supposed to be doing? What can they expect in terms of how the town operates and particularly the assessors office?
Yes.
A lot of people I know when I was falling around for about business, getting on the business directory listing, the home based businesses were like, oh, I mean, does it really impact me? I mean, am I supposed to be taxed? I've never been taxed. And are you gonna make me be taxed if I'm listed? And like, well, you have a business certificate with the town. I mean, that's, you, you're already listed with the town. It's, you know, official business. I don't really know what the procedure is beyond that. But they just had questions. I think you had said you might follow up with someone from the assessors.
Yes, yes, I, um, I actually am expecting to see him tonight.
Okay.
I know. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
But as we, uh. And it's been crazy right now with, with budget season, as I'm sure you know, um. So would we be trying to get something like that in before town meeting, do you think? Or we'll be shooting for like maybe July on something like that?
Um, I don't think there's a timeline, unless you were hoping to get information out of it for the benefit of your mailers. And I don't know when those mailers go out, so.
Okay, I will, um. I'll see what I can find out tonight and I'll shoot you an email.
Okay, I mean, but as far as working, so I don't think there's a, there's any urgency to it. It's just.
I'd be very interested to hear from the assessor and, and learn, uh, obviously what.
Yeah.
What, what that means, you know, um. Yeah, because there are a number, as we know, a number of home based businesses that are kinda under the radar and like we don't understand.
Yeah, the issues are.
When I had the barber shop over here on this property on the corner. They taxed me portion of the property. Commercial. And the rest of it is residential. And I haven't gone in there because there is no room, no more commercial there. So I gotta go and see, because it was actually at the time, this is going back. Oh, twenty years ago, it was costing me three hundred dollars more a year. And, uh, I, you know, I just paid it, you know, what am I gonna say? But I'm wondering if that's gonna be something that's gonna go on i- if this goes forward. If people are gonna find an extra tax bill because you're running your business out of your home. It is an extra three hundred dollars or two hundred dollars or whatever. You, you know what I'm saying? That's, uh, touchy. Touchy subject, I think.
Yeah, I get those phone calls.
But it's not like we're changing anything. We're just asking the question and maybe the assessors. Are kind of just overwhelmed and haven't caught up with what's out there. Um, but these are people who. Perhaps should be paying some minimal tax.
I've owned that property for thirty years and.
Yeah.
They, they caught up with me right off the bat because it was a sign there. But other than that, if there was no sign, I don't think they would have.
Yeah, yeah. And then I'm sure there's a lot of home offices. When you say what's your home office, it's. They're laptop on their dining room table.
Right.
That is the home office.
Again, so. Yeah.
Some town, I, this is, you know, way off base, because it's all about the assessors. Some towns have like minimum. Um, assets you have to have before you even trigger anything, like interest. It's under three thousand dollars, five thousand dollars in assets, you know? Then it's just like, okay, it's just, we need to know that you exist, but that's it. And I don't, I, as far as I know, it doesn't have anything such like that or.
So it's interesting. So if I, um, if I have a, say, an IT, a little IT business, say web development, say. But I have my car as a commercial plate because it's owned by the business, then that would be a business asset, right?
Yes, but you already get taxed for that as an excise tax. Yes, but you already get taxed for that as an excise tax.
Oh, okay, right.
Just that's, I mean, are you the only one involved in the excise taxes or do assessors get involved in that or?
Um, they get involved for like abatements and things like that and they, they, yeah.
But you run excise.
Yes.
Taxes, so that would be how, uh, anything without, that's registered with the DMV gets.
Yeah, you're right. Okay, so, right, so they're, they're already paying on that commercial asset.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, true. Yep, okay. Okay.
Right, um. So, input, anybody on Zoom, approval of minutes. Um, I did send that for a minute, if you need them.
I did get to see those.
Yeah.
I'm saying, um, propose a motion to approve the minutes. Second.
House second. All in favor?
Aye.
Um, the next, set the next meeting date, so sticking with the fourth month, that would put us at April twenty-fourth at six P M.
Go with that.
Okay, so do you want to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the fourth Monday of April.
So, second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, before I adjourn, anybody have any other business they want to bring up?
I did have one thing.
Okay.
That I'm hoping we could talk about at next month or future meeting. We had a land auction recently.
Yeah.
Um, where we had six, six tax possession parcels went. And they haven't closed yet, but the total of bids is two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. And I was at, I'm also on, an associate member of the Conservation Commission. I was at Concom the other night. And one of the winning bidders who bought one of the parcels doesn't have anything before Concom. Just went to go, just kind of be an observer, just be a fly on the wall, learn a little bit about how the process works. And he, he asked during public input, he said, well, if I buy a, if I buy a parcel and there might be wetlands, it might not be. I don't know. All I know is that I bought a piece of land and I want to put something on it. I want to put whatever I'm allowed to put. I don't know what to, how do I find out? How do I find out what I'm able to do? And, um, nobody had a consistent answer for him. So.
Really?
Yeah, nobody knew. So I'm wondering what we could do to address an issue of. Like silo mentality between all different boards and committees as regards to building projects. Like would somebody start off by seeing, planning? Would they start off with seeing zoning? When do they need? So if we could maybe create a, a flow chart or an infographic or something. To help people understand the process. I'm thinking like a flow chart, because I like visual aids. Thinking about if somebody wanted to do a project.
Yep.
If the project is within however many feet of a wetland or something to that effect, that involves conservation, you need this. If you're going to displace thirty-five thousand square feet, then you need stormwater and it triggers this. So that we can follow, like, does your project do this? Yes, you need to talk to planning. Does your project do this? Yes, you need to talk to stormwater. And kind of give people.
It's, it's not that simple, um, because. You don't know if the land is going to perk. That's, that's one.
Right.
You don't know what the extent of the wetland is. Uh, there's so many variables that go into it.
Right.
And people should not assume. That buying at an auction is the right thing to do.
Oh, certainly. Yeah, no, certainly.
They, you buy a beware.
Right.
So, okay, and, and in this case here, I didn't even attend this. I would normally do that. Because, but I, I, I did my homework before I, it started. And mo- ninety percent of, of the, the properties that were sold are wet.
Now, when somebody says, like, just think like buyer beware or, or do your own due diligence. What could we point people towards so that they can do their due diligence?
If they come before the auction?
I'm just thinking in general.
In general, okay, I, I would say go into the, the, uh, planning and zoning.
Okay.
Conservation is there. Conservation will open up their computer and say, okay, property number, blah, blah, blah. It's ninety percent wet. Chances of this perking are very slim. And if it does perk. We don't know if you're gonna have, so now you need an engineering firm to go out there, engineer the property. To determine whether that is the case. Then you're gonna come to border health, border health to get an appointment to perk the property. But you don't even know if you're gonna be able to do that because you've got to cross wetlands to do that. It's an expensive process.
Now, if there were no wetland, let's just say you bought a piece of dry dirt, just so I understand the product.
Yeah.
So we can kind of take, take conservation element out of it. Is that where they would start? They'd start with perking? Is that where it would begin?
Yeah, but you need to have the okay from the town.
Right, oh, yeah, no, of course.
To actually go do that beforehand.
Even if this is something.
And that's not gonna happen.
I'm just thinking if this is something you owned already. I'm just thinking.
Yes.
I'm just trying to paint the picture to help people understand who they have to talk to to do what.
Yeah, I, I think the first thing would be perk. That's my opinion. Uh, you, you get the land to perk, then you know that at least you can build on it, okay? Then from there, you gotta have it engineered. Well, at the time that you have the perk, you should have an engineer on site. If you don't, then that's another problem. Uh. But i- i- I think still the best thing to do is planning and zoning and conservation in the same office. I think that was very well planned, very well done.
Yeah, sure.
People that really know this stuff there. Uh, you know, we all know her, it's, uh, Carrie is.
Fantastic, yeah, she's fantastic, absolutely.
We could never found anybody better than, than her to do that job. And, uh, I think we should, you know, the right thing to do is, that's who I would direct them to.
Okay, so they'd, they'd start with planning and zoning? Planning and zoning would be one.
So, um, for businesses, not just, your example is more residential, but for a business. Um, Mike did write, administrator, Mike Sloan, did write a guide for.
Yeah.
Kind of walk people through the, it's more textual than graphic, but I know that at the last planning board meeting, Jeff Cabal, the chairman of the planning board. Said, I think the planning board would like to update that guide a bit because there are things that they see were vague or misleading or just needed more information in there. So I think he might, uh, be looking to like change that a bit.
Okay.
Um, but it could be, I agree. I mean, if it was more graphical in nature, like a flow chart, or if there was a companion that was more residential in nature. Would, that would be, you know, helpful, yeah.
I think that form already exists.
Okay.
Uh, and I think Carrie may have that or the building department may have.
Excellent.
I, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I, it was talked about in the past.
Okay.
Feel whole.
It depends.
I don't, I forgot how many years I've been on this.
And the business guide is posted on the town website. I know you said you had trouble finding it one day, you're looking for it.
Yes.
I did, I did mention something that's been so often said about either putting it in a couple places or links in a couple places, so it's not so hard to find.
Yeah.
Um, but it's out there, but, you know, a residential companion along the same lines could.
Okay, okay.
For people.
I was struggling to find it. And I, and I thought there used to be a really handy link and it seemed to disappear.
Okay.
Yeah, be moved, yeah.
I did put a link on our page, on the town site page. But I forget where it is now. I'm, if you go on just the regular menu, how to find it.
Okay, cool.
Anything else that anybody wants to bring up? Um, except for motion to adjourn.
I'll make that. A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, meetings adjourned at six forty-one P M.
Hey.
All right.
Bet you out of here four minutes before you wanted to be. Good.